That echoey sound that I think we all tend to get.
Oh, yeah. Maybe we just move over to Zoom at some point.
Well, Zoom does the same thing.
Okay.
But Zoom does have that touch up my appearance thing, which I like. Just saying.
Guys are live, so it's up.
Now, now is Dave also calling in or?
Rebecca, what's?
This conference will now be recorded.
Keep working on it, so don't open the meeting yet.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Dave.
Hi, everyone. How are you? How's it going? Great.
Living the dream.
Okay, we can start.
All right. If you want, let me start. Well, first of all, we should, um, start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah. Everybody ready?
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States of America.
States of America and to the Republic.
For the Republic, for which it stands.
Which it stands, one nation.
One nation.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all. All right, thank you. And I think, you know, just like.
I think we should stop.
We'll bounce right, we'll jump right into, uh, I'll take the motion to reorganize the board.
I'll make the motion, um, to vote for Carol Julius for the Chair, Dave Sheedy for Vice Chair, Bill Donald for the Clerk, effective today. And that motion should be through until the Monday following the next scheduled election, which is on, um, for 2021 on April 12th. It would be the Monday after the local election, if it's held on time.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
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 All right, Carol, let's chat, shall?
Okay, well, um, thank you all, and I thank you, Bill, um, for your past year as Chairman and for your leadership, and, um, thank you both for trusting me with the role of Chairman. And with that, um, I will move to the agenda. We don't have open forum unless somebody, Rebecca, is somebody gonna call in? Um, so we'll go right to, um, Mr. Clerk, would you like to just read through the, the agenda?
No, no open forum.
Uh, we have an appointment with Melissa Morrissey, Treasurer Collector, to discuss setting the due dates for taxes, penalty, and interest, followed by several action items. And part of that, we have, uh, several license renewals, followed by Town Administrator Report, uh, followed by Announcement Staff Report and Board Discussions.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so we'll go right to our first appointment with Melissa Morrissey, Treasurer Collector, um, to discuss setting a due date for taxes, penalty, and interest. Melissa, you have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, I was having problems. Sure. Um, as I'm sure you're aware, the Governor signed a bill to, um, address some of the challenges as municipalities are facing with the COVID-19 epidemic or pandemic. So, a couple of the options had to do with our taxes, and one was the due date. They, there is an option to change the May 1st due date to the 1st of June. I personally would not recommend doing that, um, because a second option has to do with interest and penalties, which, if we were to waive interest and penalties to June 30th, which is the second option is, that would assist any of those people who had a trust time or aren't able to pay the bill by the 1st of May. However, half of our, over half of our receipts are paid by banks and come from escrows and mortgages. And if we would extend that due date now till June, more than half of our receipts that we're pretty much guaranteed to be receiving on the 1st of May, the banks are gonna say, oh, we don't have to pay them. Let's not get the money when they need it. We'll wait. So, um, I do think we should be, um, sensitive and, um, to the residents and use the option or vote eventually the option to waive interest and penalties up to June 30th. So what that means is, if they can't pay on the due date, the interest and penalty won't be signed as long as their bills are current by June 30th. July 1st comes and they don't pay till after the 1st of July, penalties and interest then to date back to the original due date. And this is for all bills with a due date of March 10th on, so from the date the, um, state of emergency was declared by the Governor. So that would be some outside tax. We're almost exactly on track as we were last year in collection of outside taxes, you know, so far so good. Um, but I don't think changing the due date is necessary.
Okay.
Consider the waiving of interest and penalties up to June 30th.
Okay, because presumably, if people pay in their taxes in escrow, then the banks have already collected that money anyways. It's gonna come automatically, so the only people that this would really impact would be people who pay their taxes directly to the town.
Right.
Okay. Um, now, Brian, did you wanna weigh in on this?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I concur in Melissa's analysis of the situation. Only thing I would be concerned about is any other relief that may be forthcoming from the Governor in the next week or so.
Okay.
I had a conversation with David about this earlier in the week, and I have some reservations about acting too quickly. Uh, Dave, did you wanna drop in here?
Yeah, you gotta unmute.
Based on what we're hearing and based on the fact that, uh.
There it goes.
You're there.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, based on the fact that we keep on getting new information every day on what the state is and is not going to do to, uh, to help, you know, all of us out, and, um, especially in this case where it is going to be the taxpayers that we know a lot of people in our town every time I hear it, and what I suggest on this is, you know, maybe we could table this for tonight, um, schedule a meeting if the board, you know, an agreement for next Monday. We may have some more information on this, um, rather than jump into it quickly, but with just releasing this notification. And, um, I, I think we need another week, so we can make sure that we're doing what is the best for everybody out there. I don't think, uh, you know, holding on for a week may make a big difference. It may make no difference at all, but that's my feeling is let's give it a week, schedule a meeting for, uh, next Monday to discuss, um, you know, what we're gonna do at that point, what's best for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Meeting is April 27th. Next Monday's a holiday. Well, we, we could presumably meet on a different day next weekend, or Monday's the holiday, but nobody's going anywhere.
Why don't we schedule it for next Tuesday?
Yeah, we can do Tuesday in the afternoon, but yeah, I agree with David. Let's hold off on this for another week and just see what else comes out of the State House, um, or from Governor Baker in regards to this.
Yeah, in the meantime, maybe we can send something to our state senators and state reps saying, hey, this is a problem. What do you foresee happening over the next few days? And we don't care if it's a holiday. You should be working anyhow. And, and, and go, and go from there, and just make sure we're, we're doing everything that we need to for the people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I, I think that makes sense. I don't think a week is gonna make a big difference, and certainly we don't wanna, um, you know, punish anybody unduly, and as, you know, Brian said, we can work with everybody to, to make that, to make that okay.
We're, we're gonna have individual cases, and, and let's make sure that we're, we're in a position at that point that, you know, um, we can review individually, um, on people that are having trouble.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Yep. All right, sounds like plan.
All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table this, um, item for now and schedule a meeting for, uh, next Tuesday at, uh, 4:00 or 4:30. Looks ever good for anyone, or anytime, I guess, we're not going too far, any of us.
Yeah.
That's fine. Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Just wanna, wanna just set a time at this time?
Uh-huh. I can do any time next Tuesday.
Uh, 4:30 works good for me.
Okay.
All right, 4:30 it is.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. But my laptop shut off in the middle of all of that. I'm bringing the agenda back up. Sorry about that. My battery is very low. That's not good if the power goes out, is it?
Bad organization.
Okay.
You're gonna have to step up, step up a little bit on organization if you had a chair.
Listen, this is a technology problem.
If you were prepared for the power outage and read my DEFCON alert, you would've printed up a copy of the agenda.
Hey, yeah, I know. I know.
Oh, yeah.
No printer at home.
Yeah, who's going stones now, Mr. Clerk?
All right, there we go. Let's move on to action items. I am back.
All right. Madam Chairwoman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 23rd, 2020, 6:30 PM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, motion to approve the minutes of the March 26th, 2020, 10 AM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, motion to appoint Town Administrator Brian Noble, Acting Assistant Treasurer/Collector.
I'll second that for discussion. How many titles does the man need?
All right, let's have some, let's have some discussion. Doesn't come with more money, you know, Mr. Noble.
Oh, yeah. Do you know that for a fact?
I don't know anything for a fact. Let's hope.
That's right. Be very careful on this one. Can we just explain why, why this is happening, folks? Certainly. Uh, we need a second signature on the transfers and, uh, in certain cases, and we need to back up in case we, uh, have poor Melissa hit by a bus, so.
Have me hit by a bus.
He threw you right under that.
Yeah. Kinda happens.
We, as you know, our, uh, Assistant Treasurer Collector did retire, and we haven't, obviously, we're not gonna be able to be in a position to replace her anytime soon with this issue going on, so we're gonna forestall any hiring, uh, in the meanwhile, to develop a proper plan and talk about when we can interview, et cetera. And I, uh, my, my requirement at the moment is that we need a second signatory to the accounts, and we need to be in for money, or in the event that inadvertently, uh, comes down with COVID, we need a replacement, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yes, sympathy's showing.
I think that makes sense. Um, is there any further discussion?
Nope. No, that was good. That was a good effort on Mr. Noble's part.
I don't think the statement is too big, so don't worry.
All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
That's not, that's not gonna require another business card, is it, Mr. Noble?
My assistant is supposed to be getting me a power cord for my laptop, but he doesn't know what he's doing. Still, it's the black one. All right, there we go. You just can't get good help at home these days, let me tell you.
No. But it takes what you can get, Carol.
All right, let's move on to, um, our licenses, Mr. Clerk.
All right, make motion to approve the following April licenses. Secondhand articles, Susan Hartman doing businesses, Hartman House Antiques, 334 Bedford Street, hours Sunday through Monday, by chance or appointment, Susan Hartman Manager. Lorraine Parker doing businesses, Mrs. Swiftmore's Antiques and Gifts, Lorraine Parker Manager, 16 West Union Street, hours daily, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Benjamin Ellis doing business as Land of Electronics.
Mr. Clerk, I believe we have to do those individually.
Individual, okay. So we'll go back to, uh.
Sorry about that.
That's right. Uh, Susan Hartman doing businesses, Hartman House Antiques, 334 Bedford Street, hours Sunday through Monday, by chance or appointment, Susan Hartman Manager.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And make, make motion to approve the following, Lorraine Parker doing businesses, Mrs. Swift in more antiques and gifts, Lorraine Parker Manager, 16 West Union Street, hours daily, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Nope. Aye.
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 Benjamin Ellis doing business as Land of Electronics, Benjamin Ellis Manager, 687 North Bedford Street, hours Sunday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Nope.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Wayne Chiapini doing business as CNC Antiques, Wayne Chiapani Manager, 734 Bedford Street, hours Saturday through Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, make motion for the following junk dealer license, uh, Benjamin Ellis doing business as Land of Electronics, Benjamin Ellis Manager, 687 North Bedford Street, hours Sunday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, Wayne Chiapani doing business as CNC Antiques, Wayne Chiapani Manager, 734 Bedford Street, hours Saturday through Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the last one we had listed was, uh, a local jeweler, but we're still waiting for more paperwork on that, so we'll be passing over that one this afternoon.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Noble will move to the Town Administrator's report.
I have very little to give you at the moment. We're working, taking one stop on COVID, uh, but the best, uh, uh, information I have is I can't tell you when life will get back to normal, as much as that frustrates me, prison to pay that I don't ask that, and I really wish I had a better answer. But I wanted to definitely point out the very hard work of the Board of Health, the elected members, as well as the staff in the Board of Health for their efforts. It's been rather dramatic, I mean, about it, Sue Malloy, uh, and has put in this staggering. Also, I definitely wanna call your attention to the efforts of our first responders, both PMS and then the Police Department, uh, a lot of work, no complaining, so I'm very grateful to them. They've been vigilant in their response, and I'm very proud of their efforts. I circulated two articles prior to this meeting, uh, one from Kiplinger's, um, that talked about the outlook for the economy when we come out of this, and one from Hill Securities, which is our, uh, agent, and, uh, they gave us a, a nice report about how they see the response, uh, to COVID, but of course, nobody has definitive answers on what kind of an economy we're gonna come out into. Uh, but I have worked with Finance Committee, of course, this board, and the Capital Budget Committee, and we're dealing, we'll talk about the budget later in the meeting, with facts that we know today and not speculation of tomorrow. But it would be nice to assume that we will not be impacted in some way in our budget next year. But, um, we have, uh, some contingency plans that will, will help us if we come out into a much, um, much more depressed economy than I would like to admit or project. We have already been in contact with the Department of Revenue, should we enter the new fiscal year without an adopted budgeted town meeting, so we have a backup plan in case this thing goes longer than we all think it will, or hope it will. But it's important, of the towns, we have 521 employees in the town, and then we have only a handful of exposures and no confirmed cases among the five hundred and fifty. But we do take appropriate steps to mitigate the potential of harm, and we are, of course, welcoming all constructive, uh, suggestions to improve our response. As you know, we've issued interim guidance to address the contingencies in the workplace and will address the individual needs as they arise. We have provided personal protection equipment to our first responders, and we've provided masks and gloves. They're all available to our employees outside of first responders. So, at the moment, I have to tell you that I've asked the Department Heads to Curb Non-Central Spending, and I have actually asked for purchase orders over $1,000 that will require a second signature, and, uh, we're gonna try to husband our resources as we conclude the fiscal 20 year, to make sure that we have enough free cash that we possibly can generate out of this budget, uh, to preserve for next year in, in the event that things do not go as well as they would like.
Very good.
We may have to look at, at changing the date of the town meeting, but I still think it's a little early to discuss that, so we'll probably have to put that on the agenda for next meeting, next regular meeting.
And what's the lead time for that, Brian? The, what, how many weeks and?
We have to.
Do you need to make a decision?
We can change the meeting anytime you want to. There is a process for doing that. But if we schedule a new one, I'll need 14 days notice.
So we've got fun, we've got plenty of time to make that decision.
I just, at this particular moment, I think we've, for sure to say that we could, I think the only thing I would tell you is that I doubt we'll be able to do it on May 11th.
Right.
Which is the only day.
Yeah, I think that.
That's, that's a given.
Yeah.
Yeah. None of us has a crystal ball, but I'm pretty sure that one is, um.
Fortunately, the town, the, uh, state has given us the authority with, uh, consultation with the, the, uh, moderator, Town Administrator, and the Board of Selectmen, we can set an alternative, and I have a date in mind, but who the heck knows?
All right. Anything else for your report?
No, that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Rebecca, do you have announcements or staff reports?
Uh-oh.
Technical difficulties, please stand by.
Hold on.
School Department sent along a message, um, meaning that the School Department is serving lunch at your senior high school. Next week, you can grab lunches, Monday through Wednesday. What? Did you say something? Okay. Um, next week, you can grab lunches, Monday through Wednesday. On Wednesday, April 15th, parents pick up the lunches for Thursday, Friday, and for Monday, because they're doing a deep cleaning, and they would like to remind residents that the School Committee will be meeting on Tuesday at 7:00 PM. And did you wanna discuss the letter from the Board of Health that was sent out to the establishments, holding the food permits?
Thank you, I will.
Great, thank you.
We had concerns from the Board of Health, and they have acted, uh, as of today. They will be closing the lobbies, restaurants, establishments that have a drive-in window and require the use of the drive-up service or delivery only. Uh, all establishments that don't have a drive-in window have curbside pickup. No one will be allowed to enter the restaurants anymore. The lobbies, for example, in Dunkin' Donuts will be closed. Employees who should not report to work if they feel ill or have a fever, logically. Employees not report to work if they are in close contact with someone who has tested positive, logically, and they obviously have to wash their hands and follow the glove use. So we are, uh, hand-delivering this notification to the establishments, and it applies to all meeting establishments.
That sounds like a smart, a smart move. I asked Rebecca today, I wasn't even, I didn't even realize people were doing that. I thought everything was curbside or pickup window already, so I think that's a good, a good decision to make now. Okay. Shall we move on? We have upcoming meetings, but we're gonna talk about that anyways, 'cause we're ready for next week. Uh, boy, discussions, then we're gonna review the town meeting more.
Yes.
To Noble?
Uh, you want me to take the lead on that conversation?
I think you probably should.
Eventually warrant, uh, draft, um, it's still a work in progress. Still, I'm working with the Stevens, to solidify a final progress project for next year. Do you want to go article by article?
Well, we did a trickle-down article a few weeks ago, but what's the pleasure of the board? Dave, Bill, do you have? How do you wanna?
Give us synopsis of anything that may have changed since the last time we went through the articles.
Yeah.
Again, keep it in, keep it in mind that all, a lot of this can change based on what's going to happen by the time we get to town meeting. So this isn't the end of the end here. It's just, again, an, an update on where we, we would go based on, as Mr. Noble said, what we know today.
Right.
So if you can go from there, Mr. Noble?
Certainly. The first change is in art, in the special town meeting, the article for union and personnel contracts, uh, we're having to up the number because an awful lot of our employees will not be able to use vacation time that is earned in FY '20, um, but unspent, if you will. So we're gonna allow them to carry over the extension in the contract, and we'll buy back any remaining time. That does not include any time they carried over from FY '19. It only includes the time that was earned. It does not include personal time. That's, we'll lose that unfortunately if they haven't picked up. And we have to number because the largest block of unused time is in the DPW, and so that's about another 40,000. There's a little bit in the library, a little bit in Town Hall, so I'm putting aside about 50,000 in that article in addition to what I had previously slated to do that. The homeless transportation article, it was originally funded at 34,000, and that was predicated on a full school year, so we'll expect that number to drop between now and the time we do town meeting, 'cause we're obviously not paying special transportation right at the moment. Sorry, homeless transportation. In the, um, see, going down the list, we haven't really done much else, but we did remove the, uh, two of the towers.
Right.
Because obviously, if we did a special time meeting in May, there was an advantage to purchasing before the change of the fiscal. But since we probably won't be doing a town meeting in June, that means the article now only needs to appear in one place and not another. I have added an article in the special town meeting, um, we had, um, we did a, a little bit of an audit on the Enterprise Fund for Water, and we found some articles, the capital schools that we had. And we found some articles, the capital schools that had completed projects, but the money still resided in the articles. So we're sweeping all of the remaining monies into a new account for improvements in the water infrastructure. So it'll be improvements and replacements or modifications to the sewer plant. So it's sort of like, we had appropriated this money for construction and maintenance improvement. We're going to reappropriate this money for future improvement instead of just letting it flow back to the retained earnings. So we can do some water projects in the coming year. So I think, I'm just gonna go through and make sure that I've covered everything that we changed since the last time we went through it. There's a drainage easement acceptance. We have a homeowner or a property owner that has a drainage rain pipe on his property and, sorry. Oh, okay. So we're actually going to accept gift because they're going to put an easement on the property and into their deed in order to accept that, the meeting has to vote on. So that's a new article that hadn't been there before. I think, really, that's all I have that's different than what I had told you previously.
Great. Do you want to talk about the budget now?
Sure. We have a budget, and I'm waiting for the approval of the Finance Committee tomorrow evening. We, it's balanced. It was a, it was a tight fit, but we are very comfortable, or at least I am. We'll wait to see if the committee is tomorrow night. But we are, we have concluded all the budget hearings. And so tomorrow night, I'm hoping that they will vote on a finished product. There is a reluctance on the, on the Finance Committee's part because we don't know what tomorrow will bring. But I think I have to have a plan to go forward. And I think we have a backup plan in case things get cut from the state a little faster or a little deeper than we hope or want. I have a deep suspicion that they really won't cut that deeply because Chapter 70 is already voted. Chapter 90 is already voted. So it's only the unrestricted aid that we could, could take a hit on unless they want to go back and reopen the two previous bills. But my turn would be if they're trying to stimulate the economy, cutting the town's budgets would be counterproductive. So.
That makes sense. I hope you're right.
I hope so. But the direct answer to the question is if some other towns said they're gonna go back and cut their budget. Well, I think if a budget is pretty tight as it is. And to cut into it would be either layoffs or cutting productivity of the department. Then, or they're actually saying something that isn't true, that I could, I could make the town run with less. So I think the place that we would put our reserve is the capital budget items that we could postpone.
But we don't know yet. We don't want to jump the gun.
No. There's an argument to be said. We need to plan on what we theoretically want. We go to town meeting, we appropriate, we just slow up the spending of capital. Should we be in a deeper mess than I think we're gonna be, that you could go back and reappropriate that money to the operating budget to get through? Or you could even readjust the budget at that point if you need to. But I, it is not my goal to keep calling town meeting after town meeting. We get a town meeting, we do what we think, I think to do. And then if we have to go back and correct it, so be it.
Okay. Dave, Bill, do you want to weigh in on any of this?
I mean, I think we're just gonna have to play conservative. You know, I mean, but, you know, I think like Ryan has said, I mean, there's certain things you still need to move ahead with. If we can get it through town meeting, but then slow it down afterwards and kind of reassess. I think this is, you know, this situation, it's really, it's really gonna be month to month. I really do. You know, if we're lucky, it's month financially, depending on what happens with this virus going forward. But I'm of the same mindset. I mean, I don't want to call, you know, several town meetings. But I, you know, I do our faith in Brian moving us ahead on this.
And again, one of the things that we, we have to work, you know, in the future is regardless of when we go on to, to town meeting, you know, if, if this continues where it is now, we may end up doing partial budgets. We may end up, we go in June doing a 112 budget or a 1/6 or something like that. So even though we have the figures ready, we have to understand that this, this may, hopefully it doesn't, this could may change in the future.
Right. Right. No, I think that, I think, Brian, I think you and the Finance Committee did a good job with this, certainly under very circumstances we never could have predicted. And meeting under a situation that we never expected. But I think you've done a job to get us to this point, and let's hope that we can go forward with it the way it is. All right. I don't see anything else on our agenda. I might miss, there were so many emails, Rebecca.
I know. We did, we want to accept the report of the garden.
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna say. I did get that email forwarded to me on Friday, and I passed it along to you while. I don't know if you want to give the blessing, seeing as now, I mean, they can't open the gardens due to the circumstances. If you want to, I don't know, pass it or until next meeting, or, I don't know what you guys want.
If I could respond to that.
Sure, go ahead.
The community garden, regardless of, you know, whether or not they can or can't open. I'm not too sure they actually have to come to us every year for us to reapprove the fact that they can use the garden. I think it's more of a courtesy thing, but they, they do a tremendous job down there. I want to take this opportunity to thank Lisa Rue. She started this project five years ago, I believe. And she has carried it through up until the end of last season, she stepped down. But I would just want to give her all the thanks in the world for her vision and for her continuous pushing to see this operation. Because it is a tremendous project down there. They're now, for this year, they'll be putting a lot of their growth into food pantries and stuff like that. So again, a sad thanks to Lisa. And also a shout out to John Babcock. He was a steward in the organization for a couple of years, and he stepped down at the end of last season also. Again, to thank the people that do that job. It's a great job. It's great for the community. And I'd just like to go on record, you know, if you need a motion, I'd make a motion to allow the East Bridgewater community garden to continue its great work for the next year.
Do I have a second?
A second, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna start working down there. I mean, I know everything that's been closed, I mean, the common.
I don't think we can let them start working until the entire town gets an okay to go back.
But it gives them the ability to do it once they're ready.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, I have a motion. I agree with everything you said, Dave. They, they do a fantastic job, and it's a lot of people doing a lot of work. And like you said, thank you to Lisa and John for the work they did. And I know that the new stewards will do a great, great job. Corinzelar, the terrific annual report with pictures. And, you know, really covered everything they did, and it's, it's terrific. Any further discussion?
Uh, nope.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, and that was unanimous. So Rebecca, did we miss anything else in the various emails?
No, I think you guys are good.
All right. Any other business?
If I could just have one more. People are gonna be notified sometime this week, I think by paper, to please take the time to fill out the census. I know a lot of people, last I checked, 57% of the people in East Bridgewater have filled out their census and went online and sent it back, which I think is tremendous. But for the rest of the people that haven't, you certainly have the time to do it. Whether you go online and fill it out, or whether or not you, you know, get the paper and fill it out and mail it back, please do it right away. It means a lot to our community. This is how the federal government decides how much money is coming our way. It just, don't use any excuses. Let's get it back and let's get 100% there before people start coming to your door and ask you to fill it out. That would be the other selectman doing that, not me.
It's as hires people to do that.
They actually, they actually do. Except they're not allowed to go door-to-door right now is the problem.
No. And it, you know, and it is, it's a challenging thing. I mean, one of the big partners in census was gonna be the public library in every community of helping people do that. People don't have computers, and now all our public libraries are closed. So it's, it's definitely gonna be more of a challenge to get people to, to get those responses in. So good reminder, Dave. Bill, anything you need to add?
I know, I just wanted to, I actually thank the fire chief in Harns. Last week, he actually on-siteed the fire, house fire up on Central Street. I spoke with him later, and, you know, it's not too often your fire chief actually on-site the house fire like that. But we had a quick response from the rest of the department, and they were able to knock down the fire quickly. So I just want to thank the fire, the chief and the fire department for that last week. And that's it.
That's across the street from me, actually.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And I think the chief, it wasn't just that he was on-site, he saw the smoke. Was the one, I think, who saw the smoke and pulled over and called it in because he, he saw it.
Oh, yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, he happened to be going by and he on-siteed it. So, yeah.
Makes me glad I'm on his way to work.
Yeah.
I do have one more thing.
Okay.
So Nancy Hill, for the census, she wanted to give an update. And the older residents, no, the COA staff is in the office from 8:00 a.m. to noon, Monday through Friday. And so please give the COA a call at 508-378-1610. Assistance filling out the form online. You do need to have the code available from the mailing when calling. And just for an update with the census, as of April 8th, the Massachusetts self-response is 48%, and the East Bridgewater self-response is 55.9%. So it is a good response.
We're ahead of the curve.
Yeah.
Not like that coronavirus curve. This is a good curve.
Right.
The COA continues to exempt eligible residents of all ages with fuel assistance and SNAP applications. Please call Kelly at the COA, and here's the phone number again, 508-378-1610. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to noon for more information, and if you need assistance with either of those.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Anything else from anybody? Everybody good? Take a motion to adjourn if we're all set.
All right, everybody stay healthy.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, be safe out there, everyone.
Stay well, everybody, stay on. You guys, goodbye.